Last is caused by internal heart. So someone to read, anyone to talk about the last. Heart is what is taking us to sin. If you are having a verse of Jeremiah 13 to 14. Your heart is deceitful, your heart is deceiving you with admiring. Someone to prepare with the book of James, chapter one thirteen to fourteen. So, last, having that total desire, it is leading many people to sin and is causing majority to go against the commandments of God. We have, who is reading Jeremiah or James? Which one first? Okay, read James chapter one verse thirteen to fourteen.
James one thirteen to fourteen. When tempted, no one should say, God is tempting me. For God cannot be tempted by evil, nor does he tempt anyone. But each person is tempted when they are dragged away by their own evil desire and endangerment.
God is not tempting you when you are tempted. What is tempting your heart is that evil desire you are having. This is the spirit of lust. It is driving you that you have to get this thing and by all means, through sin, through what, you will get it. I need money, I don't know how I will get it. I need this man when I'm a lady, I need you. I will get you through thick and thin, I need this lady, I will get you through thick and thin. That one is what is called the spirit of lust, forcing you to sin. So, who is having Jeremiah? Jeremiah chapter seventeen verse nine.
Deceptively above all things, and the desperation you make it, who can know it?
The heart is deceiving, your heart is deceiving you that I should have this to fulfill myself, to satisfy myself. Your heart is deceiving you, but know that it's dragging you to sin, that the spirit of lust. So be careful for whatever is coming inward from inside your heart. It will deceive you, it will drag you to sin, but how will you take it? You have the power to control yourself, you have the power to have yourself. The spirit of lust is a very dangerous spirit. It is affecting all human beings, unless you are God, you cannot have the spirit of lust. The way Jesus said, a man, there is no man who is good, who is good is only God. He told the Nicodemus when he approached him at night and said, "A good teacher, why are you calling me good?" Jesus asked him, "Who is good is only God." So was Nicodemus right to call Jesus good? Why? Yeah, that's an answer, Jesus was God, now he was good. There is no human being who is good, we are all sinners before the Lord. That's why we keep on praying to do away with the sin. The spirit of lust is dragging us to sin each and every day. So, we also have First Corinthians, chapter six verse eighteen. We are speaking about the spirit of lust. First Corinthians, chapter six verse eighteen.
From sexual immorality, all other sins are person commits and outside the body. But whoever sins sexually, sins against their own body.
Yeah, that one is also caused by the spirit of lust. You are lasting for sexual immorality, sinning against your body, fornication, adultery. You are sinning against your body, why? Why are you sinning against your body? Yeah, but the body, remember your body is the temple of the Lord. Now you are sinning against yourself and against God. Let's control the spirit of lust. Even our poor Francis is having the spirit of lust. Spirit of lust is affecting every human being. No one is not having spirit of lust. Not only lasting for sexual immorality. Lust causes up to most people are thieves because of the spirit of lust. They want to have possessions, they have to, they want to have shortcuts in life. The spirit of lust makes things because he is having something which you don't have. Killing, killing is not only killing with a sword, not physical. Once you desire for someone to die, you are a murderer. Once you have, you are wishing someone to die, you are a murderer. Savior. So what are the dangers of lust in James, chapter one, verse fourteen to fifteen? What are the dangers of lust? This spirit of lust affecting all human beings. Someone to read, James, chapter one verse fourteen to fifteen.
When they are dragged away
And the Lord.
By their own evil desire and endangerment. Then after desire has conceived, it is but a sin. And sin, when it is dead.
Yeah, you're done? So that's the result, the results to sin, a sin of lust. Lust is a sin because it is dragging you to do something which is wrong before the God. You want to live a lifestyle which is not yours. My colleague is dressing well, dress on your standards, don't copy. The spirit of lust will make you to steal. The spirit of lust will make you to disobey your parents because they cannot afford to make you live a lifestyle of other people. Live your own life, okay? In a compass, don't see, my friend is having a pocket money of thousands of money with me. I don't have even a single coin. Live within your limit and always pray to God to prevent you from the spirit of lust. Spirit of lust will make you commit big sins. Spirit of lust will separate you with your family members and your friends, spirits of lust. So, when we watch generally, the forgiveness of sin, is there forgiveness of sin? Yeah, sin can be forgiven. Someone to open the book of Isaiah, our liturgist. Another person to open the book of First John. Because I don't want to take time waiting for you searching, so I'll just say, read. Another person, First John, again, First John, another person, Acts two thirty-eight. Nani? Acts two thirty-eight, who? Thank you, and then Mark eleven twenty-five. Okay, Mr. Eric. First John one.
One eighteen. Come now, let us settle the matter, says the Lord. Though your sins are like scarlet, they shall be as white as snow. Though they are red as crimson, they shall be like wool.
Thank you so much. Come to me all, though your sins are red like scarlet, see, they will be white like snow. No matter which kind of sin you are having, come to the Lord and your sin will be white, that red color. They will be white washed away by the blood of the Lamb, Jesus Christ. No matter which kind of sin you are having, don't be ashamed, Jesus Christ came for sinners. Even if you are a murderer, just face, God will forgive you. God will have mercy on you, God needs you, go and confess and God will have you. So let us go to Acts.
Repent and be baptized, everyone of you in the name of Jesus Christ, the remission of sins. And you shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Be baptized. After that, you shall be given, you shall receive the gifts of the Holy Spirit. After washing away your sins, God will give you the gifts of the Holy Spirit. Let's just go through them, minimize time, First John, chapter one nineteen, verse nine.
He is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all and righteousness.
If you confess, if you don't confess, will you be forgiven? You must first confess your sins. We have confession every Wednesday. Go confess your sins, then God will forgive you. Not only on Wednesday, anytime you can see the priest, go confess your sins. Cry to the Lord and the Lord will forgive you. Then we have Mark, is it Mark eleven twenty-five?
It says, and when you stand and pray, forgive anything you may have against anyone, so that your Father in heaven will forgive the wrongs you have done.
Can we come up again?
And when you stand, when you stand and pray, forgive anything you may have, you may have against anyone, so that your Father in heaven will forgive the wrongs you have done.
Yeah, on that chapter, God will only forgive you, forgiveness is under condition. God will only forgive you if you forgive your colleague. Not that the colleague is coming to tell you, I wronged you here. Forgive me, and you say, no, I can't. Do you expect the Father to forgive you? God only forgives you if you forgive your colleagues for the wrongs they did. No matter what, which kind of sin, they will forgive you. So forgive your colleagues first, then God will. So let's have another one, Second Corinthians five eighteen seventeen.
Twenty five seventeen. Anyone who is joined to Christ is a new being, the old is gone, the new has come.
Just want to go through them very fast. Then John, chapter three verse sixteen. Three verse sixteen. Yeah. For God so loved the world.
He said, for God so loved the world so much that he gave his own son, so that everyone who believes in him may not die but alive and alive.
Thank you so much. I put a look, look, when you put a look. Nani Akonamathu twenty-six to eight. Just need to go through the verses, being a short duration. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him shall not, but how? Now we are not sinners through Christ. Once you believe in Christ and you confess your sins, your sins will be forgiven through the name of Christ. So read out, look, Jesus now is, Jesus talking about forgiveness.
Jesus said, further, forgive them, for they do not know what they are doing. And they divided up his cloths by casting rocks.
Thank you, Jesus confessed on our behalf, forgive them, for they know not. They do not know what they are doing, they know not, that's how it's written, they do not know what they are doing. So Matthew, chapter twenty-six, verse twenty-eight.
Matthew twenty-six, verse twenty-eight. This is my blood, which seals blood's covenant, my blood poured out for many for the forgiveness of sins.
Blood of Christ to forgive your, to forgive my sins. It's through the blood of Christ our sins will be forgiven and will remain righteous. So chapter, Matthew, chapter six, verse twelve.
Matthew six, twelve.
We are remaining three verses.
Forgive us the wrongs we have done, as we forgive those wrongs that others have done to us.
When Jesus Christ was teaching his people how to pray, our Father who is in heaven, forgive us. He forgives your wrongs, as you forgive, as we forgive those who we have wronged. If you recite our Father, you will get that potion there. Forgive your wrongs, forgive your colleagues, then God will forgive you. Forgive, I forgive my brother's transgression. To expect God's forgiveness, God will pardon me if I forgive my colleague. Then six fifteen. Still talking about forgiving others, then someone to search for Proverbs, twenty-eight thirteen. Okay, Matthew six fifteen.
It says, but if you do not forgive others their sins, your Father will not forgive your sins.
Thank you. Forgiving sin is under condition. You must have heart to forgive your colleagues, it's when your Father will forgive you. Let's see, who is reading Proverbs twenty-eight thirteen?
You may try to hide your sins, confess them and give them up, then God will show mercy to you.
Thank you. I think you have heard the verses. Forgive your colleagues, forgive your brother or sister, then your Father in heaven will forgive you. Then confess your sin through the blood of the Lamb, Jesus Christ. Then God, you will be righteous through Jesus Christ. Finally, the sin which cannot be forgiven in the Bible. Jesus said, only one sin cannot be forgiven. What is it? Sin which cannot be forgiven, well, murderer. Silic. Which sin cannot be forgiven in the Bible? Yeah? Abusing all Eucharist, another person. Which sin cannot be forgiven? Abusing the Holy Spirit. The same. Another person with a different opinion. Jesus Christ said, only one sin cannot be forgiven, all sins will be forgiven yes. But only one will not be forgiven, so be careful not to omit that sin. Read, Mark, chapter three, verse twenty-nine, twenty-eight to twenty-nine. I'm going to read, Mark, chapter three, verse twenty-eight to twenty-nine. Another person to search, Matthew, chapter twelve, verse thirty-one to thirty-two. Because they are, they are talking about the same thing. Another person at Matthew, chapter thirty-one to thirty-two. Another person, Mark three, twenty-eight to twenty-nine. Who is ready with the verse?
Matthew chapter twelve, verse thirty-one to thirty-two.
Yeah.
For this reason I tell you, people can be forgiven any sin and any evil thing they say. But whoever says evil things against the Holy Spirit will not be forgiven. Anyone who says something against the Son of God will be forgiven. But whoever says something against the Holy Spirit will not be forgiven now or ever.
Then Mark, Mark three twenty-eight to twenty-nine. Yeah?
Very, I say unto you, all sins shall be forgiven and the Son of Man. And the blasphemy is where with sword, however, they shall be blasphemed. But he that shall blaspheme against the Holy Ghost has never forgiveness, but is in danger of eternal damnation.
Thank you so much. Even if you abuse the name of God, even if you sin against the Son of Man, you will be forgiven. But blaspheme the Holy Spirit, abuse the Holy Ghost, you shall not be forgiven. So be careful, how do we abuse the Holy Ghost? When you are blaspheming, saying something which is unnecessary against the Holy Ghost. When you are speaking evil against the Holy Ghost, the powers and the works of the Holy Ghost. Not only that, even the proclamation of the gospel of God, remember, they are sending Holy Spirit inside the preachers. They don't speak by themselves, but Holy Spirit inside them are speaking, preaching, proclaiming the word of God, blaspheming the Holy Spirit. Gifts of the Holy Spirit, you are saying, these are scum, these are what? That one is abusing the Holy Spirit. Be careful, you can abuse the name of Christ, you shall be forgiven. You can abuse the name of God, you shall be forgiven. You abuse the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost, you shall not be forgiven. So let us worship the God. If there is an argument about God, what I'll advise you, my brothers and sisters. Make step behind, don't argue for something you don't understand. If someone is arguing about the Holy Spirit, or about God, Holy Trinity, do not make a negative argument for Holy Trinity. Please, respect your God, glorify your God, and your God will be with you. Your God will forgive you all your sins. Respect the works of the Holy Spirit. Accept the wonders and deeds of the Holy Spirit inside your heart. So let's come together, worship the Lord, and the Lord shall forgive us all. Savior. We are together. Let's turn away from our evil doings, we confess. Don't make an argument on the word of God. Who wrote the Bible? Who wrote the Bible? Okay, thank you, already have an answer, Holy Spirit. So it was work of the Holy Spirit to write the Bible, Savior. Now you get an argument about the scam of the Bible, scam of the word of God, and you want to argue that it is wrong. You are abusing Holy Spirit, that one is the work of the Holy Spirit. If you get an argument against the word of God, kindly step behind, don't involve yourself in that kind of sin, please. Obey the word of God, even the murderers, the thieves, they do obey God, God. They bow before God, now I want to go and steal. Please God, protect me, I come back alive. Will God listen to that thief? God listen to some of them, they, even the policeman chased them away, but never caught them because they are prayerful in that act of stealing. God is just sustaining them because one day, hopefully, they will confess and turn back to God. So, let us obey God. Let us obey Holy Trinity. Let us worship God. Through the blood of Christ, our sins are forgiven. When Jesus was laid on the cross, he said, it is over. And it was over, what was over? He was sacrificing for us to be changed from our sinful lives and become righteous people. From our transgression, he was having mercy on us. People may perpetuate rumors about the word of God. Do not involve yourself, just give your maximum respect to your God. Do not bother what people says about your God. You know we are worshiping one God, Holy Trinity. Through Jesus Christ, we are saved and in Jesus Christ, in the Holy Spirit, we are living. After man sinned against God, God told man that you will die, Savior, was it? When you ate this fruit at the middle, you will die. And the man committed that sin, did he die? Did man died on the spot, they ate, yes, but did they die?
Man did not die on the spot, but the lifespan of man was reduced.
Thank you, another person with different opinion. Okay, man died on the spot, in spirit. Not in flesh, but in flesh, they came when there were some consequences of that sin. Lifespan was reduced, labor pain, something like that, in spirit. Spirit was connecting us with God, the Creator. Now God, because of sin, man cut out that relationship between him and God. The spirit was dead, which was connecting man and God. When the spirit was dead, now the Savior, the connector, the new connector who connects us with God, is Jesus Christ. Now we are no longer reconciled with God through the, our spirit which was dead. We are reconciled with God through Jesus Christ, his son. In the Holy Spirit, we said, we glorify the Father, through Christ, in the Holy Spirit. Our Father, what in heaven, hallowed be thy name, let's come up. Repeat after me. We as members of Saint Anthony.
We as members of Saint Anthony.
Now you speak individually. I as a member of Saint Anthony. I request the Almighty Father.
I request the Almighty Father.
To forgive me all my transgressions.
To forgive me all my transgressions.
To have mercy on me.
To have mercy on me.
To stay away from sins.
To stay away from sins.
To protect me against temptations.
To protect me against temptations.
And to remove the spirit of lust within me.
And to remove the spirit of lust within me.
And to remove the power of going against the Holy Ghost.
And to remove the power of going against the Holy Ghost.
Lord, come into my heart.
Lord, come into my heart.
And have mercy upon me.
Have mercy upon me.
Wash away my sins.
Wash away my sins.
Through the blood of the Lamb, Jesus Christ.
Through the blood of the Lamb, Jesus Christ.
So that I may come righteous.
So that I may come righteous.
And inherit the kingdom of Almighty Father.
And inherit the kingdom of Almighty Father.
And eat at the table with our Lord Jesus Christ.
And eat at the table with our Lord Jesus Christ.
We ask all these through Christ, our Lord.
We ask all these through Christ.
Amen. Amen. Saint Anthony of Farborough.
Ready for us.